Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for June 14th, 2011. I'd like to ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ian Mayer.
Here.
Rebecca Remison.
Here.
Carol Chelman. Kent LaPage.
Here.
Dexter Legg. Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Here.
Vanna Fidero.
Great, thank you. So if I could ask you to join me in a moment of silence, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have a motion to accept the minutes of May 10th?
So moves.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which one, non-public or public?
May 10th, minutes.
Okay, then I would like to make a correction.
Okay.
That with the charter commission, they agreed to forward one of our requests. The minute said that they were not sending any forward, and they're sending one.
Okay, so noted. And with that correction, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then the minutes for May 24th, 2011, motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up is usually a public comment period, and so nobody has signed up, but if there's anyone in the audience who feels that they would like to come before the board and say something, even though you didn't sign up, we'll give you a chance to do that. I see none. Okay. So we have a couple of special guests here tonight for some special recognition. So what I'd like to just do is take two moments while I have your captive attention. I want to say two quick things. One is, I'd like to say to all of the students on the baseball team and the percussion ensemble, that you have really reached a level of excellence and greatness. You have the longest winning streak in the history of high school baseball, and you have been judged by experts in the world to be the best performing percussion ensemble on a world stage. Truly, truly greatness. So I'd like to encourage you to take a moment, pat yourself on the back, breathe it in, sort of understand what it feels like, enjoy what it feels like, and think about it, reflect on it, and then do what you do as musicians and as athletes. You look to the next game, and you go to the next performance, and you just leave that behind. It's a wonderful moment, don't let it be. The best experience, best achievement you have in your whole life, make it the first of many excellent moments to come. The other thing I was thinking about is, so what is a baseball team, what kind of common experience is there between a baseball team and a music ensemble? And for me, and I'm sure there are many, but for me, what I take away is the one thing that seems to drive both organizations, and that is, you don't spend all of your time as a music ensemble in performance, and you don't spend all of your time as an athletic team on the field, playing games. It's mostly spent in practice. Practice seems to be the most common shared experience that both organizations have that allows you to attain a level of greatness. And so I would say, for me, the takeaway is, whether it's sports, music, art, science, writing, math, history, practice is what you need to do to achieve excellence, and you have all done that, and that's wonderful. Congratulations.
Mr. Sorrello, if you would come forward and introduce members of your ensemble, please.
Good evening.
Hi. I don't have everyone here tonight, but I'll introduce the members. If you guys would come up and join me. Adrian Snyder, Vivian Burnell, Kathleen Fitzgerald, Kristen Fuller, Ally Stillman, Seth Lampert, Ryan Dale, Mattson, Max, Cassian Kaylee, Bobby, sorry, Haley, Teresa, and...
Ally.
Reardon. And we have 26 players, or actually 27 players in the group, but we have five seniors who graduated last Thursday, and they're not here today. So I'll come up and stand behind me, and let's, 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 or actually, let's stay here, so everyone can see us.
Come closer, please, the TV cameras are this way.
Oh, the TV cameras are this way, alright, so there's a TV camera that way. Just so you know, last week, we actually were in this hall with all of our equipment, and we actually played for the city council and the mayor. And we were planning to do the same for you today, but with the time and the schedule, that didn't happen for us. But we did bring you the next best thing, is a DVD copy for each of you of our concert, so you can actually get to enjoy it at your own leisure at home. So before we leave, we'll give you a copy of that. So we'd like to apologize for that, because even though we'll give you this DVD, there's nothing like the live performance. And that really is, you can ask the faculty who are at the school performance, we perform for the school, and a live performance is really something very special. You're, when you're there, you're engaged in the performance. A little bit about our team this year. I know we've had, our record is really good and all that, but we don't ever talk about winning. That's not our mission. Our mission isn't, we're going to come in first, we're going to become the world champions. Our mission is to do the very best that we can do. So our school is, our mantra in Portsmouth, as you know, the arts, academics, and athletics, it's equal, because we know a well-rounded student is going to be successful in whatever they do. And it's not any different. You said, some of the things that, you said, Chairman, was about the time these kids spend together. Well, the time not on the practice field or not playing is probably the time that they're probably going to remember for the rest of their lives. A windy bus ride, breaking down on the way to Ohio, or losing your lights on the way back from Ohio.
We're getting pulled over.
Or getting, or a bus drive, or, or, yeah. But, yeah, or the bus getting pulled over and having to sit on the New York State thruway for an hour. But those are just some, the journey is really what the adventure is all about. And as I tell them, you know, you become the obstacles that you have to overcome in your life, and how you handle those obstacles is what makes you who you are. And we had plenty of obstacles this year. It wasn't, there was no shoe-in that we would even make the finals at the world championship, and we all, and we know that that's not what it's about. So with a positive attitude, it's, like you said, anything can happen. If you, if you believe it can happen, then there's a chance of it happening. But the difference is, it's not how many points we score, and I don't want nothing against a baseball team, because that's incredible feat in itself. Okay, that's amazing. But to have someone's personal opinion is really what it comes down to, to say that you're the best, and that, that's pretty amazing to be able to have that. And we've been there when we're not the best, we're only the second best. So that's pretty awesome, too. But, but as, but as we say, it's not about winning, it's never been about winning for us, it's about doing our best and representing Portsmouth School to the highest standard in excellence everywhere. So, thank you very much.
Can I give, will you say everybody, or would you like to do that? Is it few extras? So there's an award, Chairman Shulman, if you would, transparent one there?
Not a drumstick?
Oh, sorry.
So I'll present this to you.
Excellent. Thank, oh my god, it's beautiful. Thank you. Everyone want to touch the award? It's not, it's the Stanley Cup. Thank you, thank you very much. I always forget, and I truly don't want to forget, but you know, it takes, you talk about, you know, a village to raise a child, a community, well, we can't do without the special people. And now we have some of our wonderful chaperones over there, Mr. and Mrs. George. Mrs. George is also a schoolteacher who's, they put countless hours in. Mr. Lampert and his wife is not here tonight, but millions of hours in. Our alumni, Javert Iverson, who was in our first world championship group, who came to Ohio with us. And all the parents, Dee Dee Stillman, who's not here tonight, we have to recognize, because of the support we have from their parents, that's why it works, because they're instilling those great things in their kids. So, thank you to the parents.
Phil Chopley, if you'd come up, please, and bring your plays and introduce them for us.
It's my pleasure to present Junior Billy Hartman and our, three of our five seniors, Aiden O'Leary, Keegan Taylor, and Matt Main. We're obviously still right in the middle, or right towards the end of our season, where we've got one very big goal left ahead of us, four days from now, on Saturday night at 8:15 up in Manchester, where we're going to play for our fourth, hopefully consecutive state championship against our big rival from St. Thomas. So we're looking forward to not only these four gentlemen here, but the entire 14-player team and five coaches, hopefully bringing home a nice big piece of hardware to add to the trophy case at Portsmouth High School.
Good luck, Coach.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And now we'd like to recognize some of the retirees this year in the Portsmouth School Department. Mr. Zadrivik will call your name if you'd come up. We have a gift for you, and he'll also read a little bit of a brief biography.
Thanks. We'd like to recognize each of our retirees this year, starting with Cheryl Fawcett, English teacher at Portsmouth High School. Cheryl will be completing her 26th year with Portsmouth School Department. She has worked as an English teacher at Portsmouth High School for all of those 26 years. Next, we have Jean Keegan, also English teacher at Portsmouth High School. Jean will be completing 31 years with the Portsmouth School Department, and she has worked as an English teacher at Portsmouth High School for all of those 31 years. Next, we'd like to recognize Janet Lovering, a physical education teacher at Portsmouth Janet will be completing 34 years with the Portsmouth School Department, and she has taught physical education these 34 years, and also some health education classes, having spent all of the 34 years at Portsmouth High School. Next, we'd like to recognize Wendell Purrington, musical performing arts teacher. Wendell will also be completing 34 years with the Portsmouth School Department, having taught music to students at Portsmouth High School and Portsmouth Middle School. He also worked with students in all grades with musical performances in the plays. Wendell has been involved with the graduation ceremony as well, with the wonderful ceremony this past Next, we'd like to recognize Richard Wasner, custodian at Don Darrow Elementary School. Originally hired in 1986, Richard will complete 25 years with the school department as a custodian. He worked at Portsmouth High School, Jones Elementary School, Bracket Elementary School, and Don Darrow Elementary School. Also retiring, we have Sandra Chick, Title I tutor at Don Darrow Elementary School. Sandra's not able to be with us this evening, but will complete 26 years with the Portsmouth School Department, originally hired in 1985 as an English teacher at Portsmouth Middle School. Due to a reduction in force in 1990, she returned as a Title I tutor and worked at Little Harbor and Don Darrow Elementary. Also not able to join us tonight, Peter Stusick, music teacher at Portsmouth Middle School. Peter will be completing 33 years with the Portsmouth School Department, and worked at both Portsmouth High School and Portsmouth Middle School in the music department. Also retiring and not with us this evening is Judy Batts, third-grade teacher at Don Darrow Elementary School. She'll be retiring at the end of this school year, and complete 31 years with the Portsmouth School Department. Judy worked the first 13 years as a first-grade teacher, beginning at the Jones Elementary School, then to Bracket Elementary and to Little Harbor, and she has been a grade-three teacher at Don Darrow for 18 years. And finally, not with us this evening either, is Ken Summers, auto teacher at Portsmouth High School. Ken will be completing nine years with the Portsmouth School Department, originally hired at the beginning of the 2002-2003 school year as a vocational auto teacher at Portsmouth High School. And finally, Pat Laska is not able to be with us this evening as well. Pat is the school nutrition director for the Portsmouth School Department, and has completed eight years with the school department, hired at the beginning of the 2003-2004 school year as the school nutrition director. And just to save Kent the math, because I know he likes to add up the years, I would mention that the total years of service for all of these retiring positions is 257 years with the Portsmouth School Department.
Well, congratulations to you all. Thank you for coming, and you're more than welcome to stay if you'd like, but we understand.
I'm Mattson.
I thought they were playing at 7 o'clock, he said 8:15.
Baseball, man?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. They're playing at Fisher Cats, don't they?
Yeah. Same as last year.
That's where I was Sunday.
So, the next piece on our agenda, we have a special presentation, so we're going to spend a little time this evening talking about technology. We're going to have a report out from the Technology Committee, what we've been looking at. Tom Martin's going to talk about ClassLink, and Tom Lutz is going to walk us through a little bit of a demonstration of what this technology might, will look like, might look like. This is really just an informational for the board to, you know, these are some of the things that the committee's been looking at. And then we have a special guest who is going to spend some time with us, too. Kathy Higgins from the New Hampshire Department of Education, she's the Technology Director for the State Department of Ed, and is here to sort of, you know, have a Q&amp;A with us, but also give us a sense of maybe some bigger picture of what's going on around the state, what people are thinking about in the school districts. And we'll have an opportunity to pick her brain, if that's okay, if that's okay with you. So, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Sorry.
Tom.
Is it on?
Okay.
I don't think it's on.
You don't?
Well, you can hear my voice, but you hit it over the speakers?
No.
There you go, okay, great. I'm going to use the mic just because I don't have a clicker like some of you, so I'm going to have to come over to my computer to hit the button. It's not often that I get a chance to stand on this side of the, of the aisle. And one of the things I just wanted to go through is a little history. You know, the tech committee was started probably, what, about a year and a half, almost two years ago, and the role of the Technology Committee was really to start looking into technology. And when we first started, you know, a lot of questions came up about really, you know, what was technology, and what were we really supposed to do, and how is it going to fit in with what we're doing educationally? And a lot of what we started to come through in some of these discussions was really trying to define what technology is, and try to define what a vision is that we want to have here in the district. So we started off with really coming up with a technology vision for Portsmouth, and that vision is to, as surmised here, is to provide educational community with the confidence and skills to leverage technology, to broaden and enhance learning for all students. And through that, we believe students will use technology to enhance their learning process, develop critical thinking, problem-solve, communicate ideas, work collaboratively with others to support individual and group learning. Teachers and other staff will use technology to facilitate learning and creativity with students and colleagues. It will enable better decision-making with data-driven information, increase productivity and planning, and further a commitment to continuing improvement through the professional development of teachers and staff in order to effectively impart the teaching and learning process. So things like the PLCs and weaving in technology and how that can better help in the process. So now that we kind of have a vision established, part of what we're trying to think about is, you know, can technology help us in a lot of different ways, like expand the learning day? So we think about education today in terms of kids showing up for school. In elementary, they're coming to school at 8:40, they're leaving at 3 o'clock, but can technology help us broaden that day? Kids go to school, they could start taking a look at things before school, they could actually do things after school, but could technology help us expand the learning environment and the day? Can technology help us further individualize learning? We know how important it is to be able to teach something to the specific way someone might learn. We've got people that learn kinetically, visually, audibly, all kinds of different ways, and we've got teachers that do a great job at being able to do it, but can we, can technology further help individualize how kids learn, so that we can build an individualized learning plan? And of course, you know, the questions from a board perspective is, you know, can we save money, or how much is it going to cost? But is it too much to think that we can actually use technology to save money? And maybe the other question that pops up is, not only can we save money, but if that's a resource that we're spending today, how do we redirect the money that we're spending to further develop kids in the educational process? So can we take money to actually have more people who are going to be integrating technology versus spending money on devices that are sitting on the, on the table, or in the classroom, but actually find ways to integrate it so that we can better utilize it? It doesn't take long to think that technology is happening. I mean, there's a statement my dad always said, the time waits for no man, and technology doesn't wait either. Things are happening around us whether we like it or not. There's a demand for greater access from anywhere. People want to have access to their school files at home. We know kids are very savvy in what's happening. We see a broad spectrum of technology used by teachers, some that are embracing it, and we've seen some presentations this past year of teachers doing a lot of work with technology, with iPads, iTouch's, and incorporating it into their curriculum. We see teachers who are keeping it at arm's length. We also know that more and more educational apps are available on the web, so you're not necessarily buying a piece of software and being forced to load it onto a specific computer and use it for a specific class, but you can go out there into this larger cloud of information and find information that can be relevant for you and use it. You know, this past year, the Pew Research did a study and collected information on internet usage and what students are actually doing with it, and how much, is it, is it really that pervasive, or are they not using it a lot? But when you look at 93% of teens are serving the internet, 58% of 12-year-olds have a cellphone, it's amazing what they're doing. And so, from a technology standpoint, how is the district going to keep up? We know students are advancing at a fast rate with technology, but can we find ways to incorporate some of that, that passion, that fervor for being able to use it in a learning environment? Our current state of affairs is, is pretty basic. We've got a distributed PC network of about 1,000 devices. You know, these are computers that we know today, like at your home. We've got them sitting on desks. We have a variety of different types of hardware from different years. They all have hard drives, different operating systems on them, various different applications. So when you walk into one classroom, it might have a different PC, it might have a different operating system, it might have different applications. And access to those tools and resources are limited to that classroom. So if you walk from the high school from, you know, room 116 to maybe room 118, you might have a different experience. Technical issues, version control, lack of knowledge, challenges classroom productivity. The second a teacher has to stop and figure out why a computer is not working, or to make sure that this application is loaded correctly, whatever it might be, it's halting the educational time that teacher has with those, with those kids. Inefficient use of software licensing, support resources, it ultimately diminishes the end-user experience, and those are things that we want to try to avoid. So we looked at a lot of different things that are out there and tried to see, you know, what are things that are happening in other schools? We talked to other schools, we talked to a lot of different companies that were out there offering educational solutions, and we really started to drive towards this cloud computing model. A lot of people use cloud services today and don't even know it, but if you happen to have a Yahoo account, if you have a Google Apps account, Gmail, these are all great examples of cloud computing. You didn't download software to use Gmail. All that functionality is out there. When something has to be updated, Google does it. Did you actually see them do any update? Or did suddenly some new feature appear, and now you're using it? That is a great example of how cloud computing works. It's something that you become more of a consumer, you just use it, but it sits out there. So that's the, that's the global side of things. But now you can take a look at how cloud computing can boil down. And one of the things that has... more from the standpoint of a one-to-one relationship that creates a unique and personalized experience, one that is not dependent on a specific piece of hardware, but is, gives the opportunity to be completely agnostic. Whatever device you have, we can support that experience. And I also need it to be delivered in a sustainable cost model. And by the way, I need to connect from the school, from home, from anywhere I am, I need to have access to all of those resources. So, why cloud computing? There's a lot of answers, but if there's going to be three big ones, better access, greater reliability, lower operating costs. Better access will give us 24/7 access from anywhere we want on any device. We talked about that personal, unique and experience so that you're walking anywhere you want. You could be a teacher going from one building to the next building, you log on, it's going to be your environment. It's going to be your desktop, the resources, the applications, the data that you have created, it'll be accessed from your login. It won't be tied to a specific piece of hardware, it's going to be wherever you are and whenever you log in. We can do a lot of things from reducing and simplifying expenditures, reducing problems, shifting expenses so that we can focus on the, on student achievement, allow greater experimentation and choice in terms of what teachers want to do and experience, reduce barriers to participation so we can now have everyone have a unique experience, have access to those files, whether you have those specific resources at home or not, you can log on and now have access to those resources. So, how does a cloud system work? I can go through a lot of the specific details, but the idea is that all the technology, all the functionality, all the material, whether it's an application, whether it's your data file, is going to be sitting out at a central site or multiple sites, and then you're going to be able to have access to it. So, the device that you're on really becomes a thin client. It's not going to have a lot of, a very robust platform. So, here's a quick diagram that kind of speaks a little bit to it. You can have many different types of devices. You can have all the different applications that you could be unique, put them back up, and then you can redeploy them out to all those different devices. You can then also take those same applications, port them across the Internet, and put them out to your house. So, here you have a whole host of different devices, whether it's a Mac, you know, whether it's a PC, whether it's a tablet, you can now have all these same applications here, and they're all going to be served up from a central location. So, the end-user device is not some fancy PC. "Oh, you know, I just got this Xenon dual-core processor with 2 gigs of RAM and a huge hard drive and these great other features." You know, you don't need to worry about what type of computer you're buying. You need just a device. And some of these devices can cost as little as $250. It's an appliance. It's no longer this fancy computer. It's an appliance that anyone can turn on, we can turn them off. If it breaks, we put a new one in there, you plug it in and it works. Because all of your data, all of the functionality, all the brains are now sitting out at a central site. And it could be sitting here inside the Portsmouth network, it could be a combination of inside the Portsmouth network and outside the Portsmouth network. But that's essentially how cloud systems are going to work. Thin clients, I won't go and bore you through the details of a thin client, but it's not going to have any of the functionality. All it's going to be able to do is present in a robust fashion, the same way that you're used to seeing it. It'll look like your regular computer, but it will just be thin. It will not have any of the hardware and functionality to be able to do the processing locally. It'll still be doing it, emulating it from a central site. So, the other thing that we talk about, going back to the one-to-one computing, is what if kids could bring their own device? You know, instead of us going out and buying computers, we have kids that know how to use their own computers. They might have a Mac laptop, they might have a Netbook, they might have an iPad. But what if we could have them bring their own device to school? What if we had a system that would enable us to be able to support it, not just from the standpoint of having wireless access? And I think people understand wireless. You know, we have wireless here in the city. We've got wireless here in City Hall, we've got wireless at the schools in a lot of locations. So, if kids could bring their technology to school with them and we had a platform that could then deliver that unique experience so that on your iPad you could touch an application and it would open up and now it'd suddenly be your school desktop, you would suddenly log in and have access to those same types of resources, suddenly the conversation moves away from what types of devices you have to really the information that you're using to create it. One-to-one becomes a reality. You now have this access that we talked about. And from a capital standpoint, we're not talking about targeted capital going to more and more devices, it can go to other resources. Cloud computing makes the bring-your-own-technology possible. We started looking at a lot of different companies, from Stoneware, we talked to VMware, we looked at Microsoft, and ClassLink was one of the companies that we took a look at that had a very robust, educationally-focused desktop platform that was very intriguing. So, we continued a lot of conversations with some different companies, took a look at a lot of stuff. And back in April, we decided to move forward with putting a pilot. And a pilot means that we actually got a server, we got the ClassLink platform, we loaded it up here into one of our data centers, launched the stuff, we started taking a look at teachers and students that could use it. We started doing a pilot in room 116 at the high school. And I'll talk a little bit more about what we wanted to achieve in the pilot, but this will just give you a little bit of an overview of what you're going to see. These are screenshots and later Tom will take us through a live demo. But ClassLink's been around since 1998. They've received a lot of accolades. They work with a lot of different people, 45 states, over 3,900 schools, over 2.6 million students and teachers are using this platform today. So, we knew we were on to something in terms of, you know, this is not a brand-new company. They've got a deep bench of actual users. They really focus on the fact that, you know, having ubiquitous anytime access is one of the keys. A quick slide that just validates the fact that, you know, desktops are becoming less and less important. You know, we just saw the press release from Apple on iCloud services that's going to eventually eliminate the personal computer. So, the idea is that this is a movement that's afoot and has been afoot in many different areas. We're taking a look at it from a school perspective of, you know, is this something that we want to go down? Is this, is there something from a cloud perspective that we can take advantage of? And then, as I mentioned before, you know, we have a lot of different things. There's the public cloud where we talk a look at about things like Gmail, but now think about educational apps that are available out there, Moodle, Sakai, a lot of other educational pieces that are out there. And then we can take a look at the private cloud, which is inside the Portsmouth walls where we might have Microsoft Office products, we might have AutoCAD, we might have some design tools, we might have learning and language components, we might have math software that kids want to be able to use that could be delivered inside the private cloud. And so, the model becomes, well, do we do private? Do we do public? Or is there something in the middle where we're going to do some kind of a hybrid? Where it makes sense, we might have specific software from a special education standpoint that we want to buy and be able to deliver ourselves. And we might also want to be able to leverage stuff that's out there already. You take a look at Google Apps is a great example where instead of having Microsoft Office with Word and Excel, those things are available already. Google Apps is offering it. So, we might deliver a hybrid cloud model. ClassLink put this out as sort of the top 10 Ed Cloud considerations. We've already talked about a lot of them. Their solution's E-Rate Fundable. It leverages things like Active Directory. So, if you wanted to know, well, can we integrate this with some of the other stuff that we've already invested in, like Infinite Campus? So, we have kids that will come in, we track all kinds of records, we know who they are. Can Infinite Campus integrate with this so that we can sign up a new student and it auto-sets up an account for them? So, there's things that we can do through Active Directories and some of the technology they already have to integrate a more common platform. We've got collaboration tools and other tools that we can do on this platform that are considerations that we want to have so we can find out how many people are using technology, how are they using it? Can we use those, that information to better deliver what we want in the classroom? So, here's this anytime, anywhere login. It's going to look very much like a webpage, because it is. It's a web portal that you're going to log into, sign in, username, password. Obviously, it can say Portsmouth versus HP Cloud. We can customize all this stuff. And you're going to have an instructional desktop. It's not going to look much different than what we see today on any other computer. You can have access to different applications. You can customize your desktop to whatever you want, personalize it. You can open different applications. So, here's a classic, Microsoft Excel. Open up the Excel, produce a file, save it, go home, open it back up, continue working on it, close it down, come back to school, open it up and continue the process. It doesn't have to stop once you leave that one computer that you're used to working You can jump out to different web apps, and we know that there's a lot of stuff that teachers like to have. So, they can come out here to J-Cut, they can go out to Google Earth, see different things. We have the ability to manage different applications, so we delve down into what are some of the things that this also will enable us from an administration standpoint? We can have a different platform per grade. So, when you get into third grade, we're going to give you these applications. Once you get into fourth grade, we can give you these applications, we can give you a little more storage. We can have teachers who can define exactly what their students see every time they log in. Well, if this student is now going to be taking this class, we want to have this application running. I'm now going to be able to develop this curriculum and I'm going to ask kids to go home and be able to access that curriculum and do work from home. So, I'll have a lot of different things that I'll be able to do because I've got a management platform behind that I can define who, what, where, and how they have access to information. This platform also has the ability to offer things that we don't offer today and we might not want to offer yet. But you start looking at things like instant messaging. I might be home doing some homework and I see that my teacher is online. Maybe I can now instant message my teacher and ask them a question. I might need to get some help, so I might be able to communicate with another student or my teacher. There might be other things that I could do with another school if they're on a similar platform. I might even be able to have an audio or video chat with a teacher. Or the teacher could have a conference with multiple students. This just gives you a picture of what your drive might look like. It's going to be presented a little differently, but the fact is, is you would have a file directory no different than what you would have today. So, the pilot goals, you know, we wanted students to be able to easily and reliably access the applications and files virtually, access the applications and files from home and other remote locations. You know, as an IT team, you know, this is something that's ongoing because this pilot is really in the early stages of understanding, you know, what are the implications into the Portsmouth network? Do we have enough bandwidth between schools? Do we have enough bandwidth out to the Internet that we might want to leverage? How are we going to be able to manage it? We understand how we manage things today, but it's a different animal and we need to understand what the implications are in terms of support resources, costs, how things are going to work. And I'll just finish up here just with next steps that we're going to continue the pilot here for the next few weeks. We've got teacher and student feedback that we're collecting. We have a couple companies that we're working with that are finalizing some network design, some various deployment options, what some of the costs are. We have the middle school project that we need to consider on, since it's almost essentially a green field, if we had to do it all over again, what would we do? Would we do this solution? And so, we need to understand how this fits into that model. And then we'll be able to pull together a final recommendation that we'll bring back here to the board on where we think we want to go, what the costs are, what the implications are, and a roadmap and how we would want to get there. Okay? Any questions?
Excellent. Yep, Anne?
Tom, I just had one question. But students still need access to the Internet at home, is that correct?
They would. They would.
Okay. So, that, we still have that problem of kids who don't have Internet access or don't have a computer or, I mean, they may have a device, but they may not have wireless or they may not have, you know, Comcast access or whatever else.
You're absolutely right. You know, but one of the things, so here's one of the things that can help mitigate that, is that suddenly you could go down to your public library, use a computer in the public library and now have access to all the same things. You know, we could even talk to the Portsmouth library and maybe there could be a section where we have a section set up just for students so we have students who need to be able to have access, you know, at different times, we could be able to have access there. But you're right, there are, I would say it's a small subset of our community, but that's a reality.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also don't have one of those whiz-bang remotes. like. I need more than just a clicker. Okay, basically what I'd like to show you here is, this is the actual live site that I'm going into. This is the pilot program that we have through ClassLink. Keep in mind that this is a, this is a proof of concept. This is a picture of what, of how this would look, okay? We're not saying that ClassLink is going to be necessarily the final solution. It could be, it could be something else. Also, keep in mind that there are several different ways of going about this, and depending upon which applications we determine are most important to deliver through this solution, that actually affects what we have on the backend. ClassLink has been in business, as Tom said, for a good number of years. They've had very good success with a school district in Hudson Falls, New York. Hudson Falls has been with them, I think, pretty much from the beginning for the last 10 years or so. They are using actually a solution that happens to be running on Citrix as a backend to it. So, it's a different type of a virtual desktop environment. This is ClassLink's latest and greatest product, and it's actually still under development. I mean, we're very cutting-edge on this one. So, we've run into some interesting things with this and working with ClassLink. You know, things that obviously as they develop, they'll work out the bugs too, but certainly we're having great fun working with them and finding some of the things that work really well and some of the things that don't work as well. So, without further ado, actually what I'm doing here is I'm logging into the ClassLink server. I'm actually going all the way to their server in New Jersey, I think it is, first, and then it bounces from there back to the server that sits actually over at the high school building. Once I log in as a user, as you can see, I'm running a web interface and basically all this requires is web and Java installed. As long as you have a device that can support those two, you can get to this point, which of course opens this up to a lot of different devices. What you see here is a desktop, just as you would pretty much sitting at your own desktop on your Windows machine. You can click on the little essentially start button up there in the corner and scroll down and see all of your apps and such that you can run. You can also click on your applications on the desktop. As Tom mentioned, here's the As Tom mentioned, here's the, down here is the little indicator for chat sessions and who's online and all that sort of thing. Obviously, this time of night, I'm the only one online, so can't chat with anybody. But in order to launch an application, you just simply go to the shortcut, double-click on it, and it actually launches this application right off of a terminal server, again, that's sitting over at Portsmouth High School. Once it pulls up off of the server, you can obviously type away, do whatever you want to in this application. And then you would, you know, click File, Save, and basically go to the, your save location. The save location is very important. We want to be able to, in this environment, we want to be able to allow people to have access to the same files, the same save location from inside the building as what they see at home. Both places should go to the exact location, that exact same location. Right now, we're trying to point that all to our file servers in a, in a larger solution. We will certainly be looking at a storage area network to, to support all of this. But the important thing is that the experience should be the same for you if you're sitting in your classroom, if you're sitting in somebody else's classroom, if you're sitting, you know, at home, if you're sitting in the, in the park, you know, using the wifi that's there. It should all be the same, the same experience. And I'm not going to save. We can also dish out web applications off of this. As Tom mentioned, you know, obviously we can use, do Google Earth. We could put a link on here to, to Moodle or Infinite Campus, all that sort of thing. It's certainly a time saver to have it, have it there just so you can get to it. But there's no real advantage to doing any sort of web apps that are already in the cloud. There's not a huge advantage to running it off of this desktop as opposed to just clicking on a new tab and, you know, starting up a, a new session and going to, to something that's already web-based. We are, as part of this pilot, you know, experiencing, like I said, some applications run, run really well, some other applications, we run into issues. And just as an example of one of the ones that we have to take, take into consideration is, Kurzweil 3000 is a, it's a application for our Student Services Department and it's, what it does is essentially reads text to, to speech. And one of the things that we run into in this virtual environment is, how do you get the audio from the server over to your, to your client? That's one of the things that's definitely a, one of the challenges in this piece and it's something that we haven't been able to overcome yet, you know, with this version, but it's a, it's a known, a known issue. It's something that as people are moving more and more forward with cloud computing, they're really looking hard at how do we do that? If, if audio is a really, really big deal for us across the, the way, terminal server on the backend might not be the solution. We might have to go with a Citrix or a VMware underneath. And again, this is, this is where the decisions have to be made as to what is, what are the most important applications to serve up in this, in this environment? Because that educational decision will drive what the technology is behind it. I'll just cancel out of that. And the, the, I think what Tom mentioned a little bit of, the main difference between what we're, you're seeing here and what you see going to Google Apps or something like that is that we're actually essentially providing a, a platform, a desktop environment, a, a platform for applications to run on as opposed to Google Apps, Moodle, anything like that. That's a very targeted application. It'll run one application, but it can't support the multiple applications that you see here. So with that, are there any, any questions?
Maybe not at the moment. Don't go away.
I won't go anywhere.
Okay. Thank you. So what, what I'd like to do is invite our guest up, Kathy Higgins, from the Department of Education, Technology Director. You can walk around with the mic or stand at the podium.
Do I use my teacher voice or use the mic?
Use the mic. This way, people at home can hear you as well.
Is that on?
I don't know if it's on.
Yes.
Yes. He says yes.
He says yes.
Pay no attention to that.
The wall was talking. Okay. Great to hear all the background. What, what I, what I think I'm going to do, it was good to hear the background because I was sort of taking little notes as I went along. Steve and I talked a little bit about how I could be of service here tonight. And, and I suggest, well, we basically decided that perhaps to maybe step back a little bit and give you a little bit of a sense of what's happening across the, the state and the nation, and then maybe just come back a little bit to some of the points that I've heard earlier from Tom and Tom. And then maybe we can have a Q and A. So let me first though, just to, to get to, to sort of lay a little background. This is actually a, a site in process. We're actually transferring, we've had a site called New Hampshire Educators Online, N H E O N dot org, has been online for at least a decade, more than a decade actually. But it's gone through a couple iterations. It's looked very different than this. And this is actually just the latest incarnation of the site. So it's actually in process, so there's content that's not been moved here yet, but you're actually one of the first to, to see what's on it. But the, the reason I have this up is because in the, the National Educational Technology Plan of 2010 actually provides a really strong background, I think, for a lot of the discussions that are taking place now in terms of the infrastructure, the, where you're going, your purpose, what you're thinking about. And so I think it's a nice framework for that. And so we kind of created, recreated this site sort of in that vein. You have learning, assessment, teaching, infrastructure and productivity, which are really the main goals of the new National EdTech Plan. And New Hampshire will be having a similar conversation all across the state about what should our new state ed tech plan look like? The national plan is actually called Learning Powered with Technology, Transforming, Steve, tell me the, the full title.
Transforming American Education. Transforming American Education, Learning Powered by Technology.
Thank you. Transforming American Education. So if you think about learning first, as, as Tom was just saying, your, your educational decisions really need to drive that. And then of course, the assessment piece. There's both, there, we, we all know about, you know, there was, there was NEAP, then now, now we have KNECAP, the state testing. It appears as though we're moving towards the Common Core standards and a national assessment. That's one kind of assessment that our, our students are going to be engaged in in the future online. The discussion is that the smarter balanced assessment, that national assessment that New Hampshire would use, would be an online assessment. So there again, you have another reason for thinking about what are the devices that are there to support the assessment side of the teaching and learning process? Along with that, of course, we know that teachers, our teachers are constantly having to retool themselves. We're all in this together. We're all learning about digital media. We're all learning, you know, how many, how much of the planet is now using Facebook to reconnect with friends and family and, and also using it professionally. Other sites like that, we've all heard about the, the stories of Twitter and other online media that helped create democratic changes in other parts of the planet. So there's all those discussions. So with, with your technology planning and your thinking about moving forward, I would encourage you to just think about this, these broad strokes and think about what is it that you envision for your schools and what is it that you envision for your graduates? I think, Tom, you, you laid it out nicely earlier about all of the changes that should be taking place and, and how can we be preparing our kids moving forward? So let me just tell you a few things and then we can just go into a, you know, just a broader discussion. One of the things, if you're thinking about your infrastructure pieces, the, the pros and cons of something like a ClassLink, you know, the, the pros are that you have one space and you have, as was stated, you have a place where kids can go, day and night, teachers can go, they have 24/7 access, all of that. The downside is that, as you mentioned earlier, what about kids who go home and don't have internet access at home? Or what if they have a computer without internet access? What if that access varies widely depending on what part of town you're in or, and I don't know the level of connectivity in Portsmouth itself? So all of those things. The other piece that I, that I was thinking about as I looked at ClassLink was thinking about how you envision your students using technology. That was a great interface, nice and clean and, and all. The, the question I would have, and this doesn't mean it's a bad interface, it doesn't mean it's a bad system. I think it could be wonderful. But I always try to look at things from a critical eye. I have tons of conversations over the course of the year with software companies and so on. And the question is, in a system like this, is it a student that's going to be actually creating? We talked earlier Mitch about digital content creation. Are they going to be creating? This is sort of the movement now where we have so many more digital tools where kids can be creators. They can be doing their writing online. They can be doing graphics, visualizations. Recently, well, in recent years, I would say, GIS software, geographical soft, information software, has become commonplace in just about every field now. And so things like visualization being out and being able to use geographical GIS software, GPSs, is commonplace. So that's a, a typical skill. All of those complexities that didn't exist 20, 30, 50 years ago perhaps. So those are some of the things I was thinking about. If that becomes, if we become dependent on one system like a ClassLink, we have to be, I think, careful that it's giving the right environment for students. Because we're also trying to create, trying to support them to become good digital citizens. We want them to understand the complexities of how, how do they analyze sources on the web? So on the one hand, also keeping kids, if we use a system where we can always sort of manage it and control it, the challenge is that they're sort of in this bubble or this protected area. So you want to ask those kinds of questions too. And I'm sure that your tech committee will be asking those kind of questions and struggling with these issues. But those are some of them that I thought of. We are, Vermont and New Hampshire and Maine are actually starting, we, my counterparts in those states have begun a discussion just to explore the question of one-to-one initiatives. We do have some one-to-one initiatives in New Hampshire. You may have heard in the news about Wyndham High School has a strong one-to-one initiative. They're, as they add grades to their new school, they, every kid does have a laptop. We've had over time, different schools that have achieved a one-to-one ratio, either school-wide or in certain grade bands. But the question now is, do we support or go towards a, a bring your own device model? Or do we consider whether a better model might be a one-to-one provided by the school the way we do textbooks or the way we provide other teaching materials to our kids? And that's the challenge. Of course, for years, it's been considered too cost prohibitive. Well, now everything, all the costs of technology have come down too. So I think it's worth exploring and considering that option. And so I think in the coming months, we'll have more information about, is that likely that if multiple states join together, that we could get a really reduced cost? That would make it, then what you'd be looking at is, instead of sending kids home with textbooks in a heavy backpack, can we spend the same cost per student per year and give them the digital form? So those are some of the things that, that I think you, you want to think about. You want to ask yourselves, how much do you spend now on instructional materials per student per year? And, you know, maybe a, a true cost analysis of that might say, gee, if we could get that, you know, if we could just flip that around, that might be a, a reality. There are schools across the country, not just in New Hampshire, who are asking all the same questions that you are. So some schools are trying to bring your own device, other schools are doing the one-to-one, other schools are, are resigning themselves to the fact that they don't, can't get to a one-to-one and working with a two-to-one or three-to-one ratio of devices. Tom already mentioned the cloud piece. The cloud, moving content to the cloud has become pretty evident now. However, there's also discussions about, will everything be primary, will my information, all of my stuff, my digital world, will all of that be in the cloud? Or might I actually have like personal storage in my home, let's say? But the cloud also has it, so it's both places. So I think the jury's still out on how the cloud is going to actually function for us best. It's like any of the other technologies, it's changing. We do, one of the things you'll want to keep in mind about leveraging is the federal E-Rate program. I'm, I'm sure you participate in E-Rate. One of the things that you're required to have when you participate in, in the E-Rate program and, and gain those E-Rate discounts on your internet services is, you have to have your technology plan, of course. And so every, so many years, your technology plan gets refreshed and updated. And so it sounds like there's a, a major refresh going on now and that's, that's a good thing. It sounds like you're having all the right questions come up. But you do have to have that plan and it does get submitted to the, the Department of Ed. It actually comes to our office, the Office of Educational Technology, and we review it. And I think I've read every plan in the state now, at least once or twice. And those plans are, are very different across the state. plans are very different across the state. There are certainly common elements, but every school district really is different. There are certainly similarities, but there are uniquenesses. So, with the E-Rate piece, one of the things we did last year, we actually worked with a group of tech coordinators from school districts to put together a statewide E-Rate, to file a state E-Rate Form 470, which basically initiated the bid process. And we reviewed bids and we chose a provider which schools in New Hampshire, as an option, can choose the services of that, the best bidder that was chosen. So, I asked Tom earlier where you're at in your E-Rate cycle right now in your contracting. So, you know, you might want to look at that and see, is there a different, I know there's typically multiple kinds of contracts that are involved in this. So, you want to look at that. What's happening in New Hampshire schools also, Tom mentioned Sakai, there's Sakai and Moodle, two major, two major content course management systems. There's a whole consortium of schools. This was initiated by SAU 53 in Pembroke, where they installed the Sakai course system. And there's about a dozen schools that are part of that consortium, and they're basically learning together. They're, you know, when one school has an issue with the software or trying to do a certain thing, they pool their ideas and they learn from one another. The same thing with the Moodle Consortium, which is about another dozen schools in New Hampshire that have worked together. So, my other question in terms of ClassLink is, again, first deciding on what purpose, what your purpose is, what are the features that are valuable and important to you, what are the highest priority features, and what can you live without, maybe? So, is it a combination of a Moodle system and maybe a couple others? Or can ClassLink, for example, provide all of that in one package? Can your teachers be creating courses, for example, in it? So that you have more, they come to school, they have certain activities in school, and they go home, and perhaps the classroom is extended online so that they have other assignments and content that they can access through ClassLink or something else. So, you'll want to be thinking about that. Thin clients, there are different school districts that have tried thin clients. Some of them have had great success. Others, I think, have had various problems. But again, I think it tends to be a little bit unique to each situation. So, Tom would want to really, you know, talk with those other schools and, you know, look at the pros and cons. So, those were the things that came to mind immediately. In terms of connecting, even if you do a bring-your-own-device, I think the, there are still questions, many schools in the nation are wrestling with the bring-your-own-device. And I think there's still some questions about where do the legalities lie in terms, even if a kid or a teacher comes into your school building with their own device, if they need to connect to the web, they're going to probably need to connect through your network. So, the question is, what are your policies now and what policies might need to be revised to do that? So, yeah, I think those are the, oh, I have one other thing that you might, I just was looking at this resource today. The website is, it's actually mobile21, M-O-B-L-2-1.com. Very interesting resource where, you know, they're thinking mobile, too. When you talk about bring-your-own devices, it might be that you have a set of devices in school, but also that can be supplemented by a student's own cellphone or other mobile device. The question still is, though, what's the content? You know, so you're always getting back to the educational purposes. Those are the only things I want to say, and I really think I need to stop talking so you can ask questions and we can have a dialogue.
Well, thank you, thank you. So, let's open it up. Leslie?
So, I think I'm getting pieces of this, but I think I'm sort of missing some of the maybe infrastructure stuff. So, how is this different than what we do already? Like, my son can access Moodle from home, Google Docs and things like that. So, how is it different than what we're already doing? In my case, where my children have access to the Internet and their own computer at home, they can do things at home that they were working on at school. It's not, obviously, we do have access to the Internet, so it's not going to solve the issue that Ann brought up. But how is, how will this be different?
ClassLink specifically?
Well, the whole idea of cloud, I guess you call it?
Yeah, of cloud computing?
Right.
Maybe I'll take the ClassLink part. And one of the things I want to make sure people understand is that there's two objectives here that we're trying to deal with. One is, you know, how do you manage a physical infrastructure where you have just a lot of different devices and you might want to add more devices to it? So, we have a infrastructure that we want to deliver, and we also want to be able to manage it, control the types of access to it. So, from a ClassLink standpoint, ClassLink is much more on the physical layer. It's not something that's going to be replacing Moodle, or it's going to have this, you know, pie in the sky, we serve all needs. It's really down to the device level to say, can you manage infrastructure differently so that you can have things like a unique experience on any different type of a device using a cloud model? But it becomes much more about how you manage an infrastructure and what you decide to put on top of that, whether it is Moodle or Sakai or any of these other things. Those are the choices of the district. But we're talking, you know, ClassLink is not going to be suddenly going, hey, we're a one-fit shop for all services. It's down at the physical layer to say, you know, delivering a physical PC that needs a technician to make sure it's operating, where we're going to load specific software on each device. Granted, more and more stuff is now going on to the web, so you can type in a web address and get to Moodle from home or at the school. We're talking about the physical layer. When you get into the other stuff, now ClassLink has the ability to say, if you have a customer, like a student or a teacher, who walks into the environment and says, I want to now browse the web, well, ClassLink has the ability to monitor and put policies on top of it. So, I might have different levels of access than you might have. And it would be able to track and enforce an acceptable use policy, or certain sites might be blocked. So, it becomes a tool for the administration to manage and control. It's not necessarily going to stop a kid from accessing resources that we say, hey, you know what, go out and explore and do what you want, as long as you've, you know, stay between these guardrails. And that ultimately, what is what, where ClassLink fits into the platform. And then...
Okay, so how is it different than what we have now?
I think that's a, it's a, go ahead.
Actually, if I could just expand on that. The major difference from what we have now is that ClassLink would allow, or some other virtual desktop environment essentially allows access to traditional applications and to your files over the web.
What's a traditional application? I don't know what you mean.
Word, Microsoft Word.
Activity stuff.
Exactly. You know, we had Picasso up there, we had some other things. Things that we actually have licenses for, software that we purchase licenses for and have those in-house. You know, we don't, we don't purchase licenses to, you know, put them on all of our machines here and then send licenses home for, like, the Office Suite to every student to put on their home machine. And I mean, we don't even know, obviously, what people have at home, so it would be an impossibility. But to be able to put that Word application, for example, on top of the virtual desktop, that means that you can go home and instead of using whatever version of Word you have at home.
So, everyone uses the same?
You would jump into ClassLink and you would have, you know, as a student, you'd be able to use the exact same version of Word at home as what you're using in school. The other advantage to it is that, that Word also, and those other applications, save to the same network drive that you use at school. Okay? Through the web interface, you're not only going into Word, but you're also going into Word and then jumping over to the storage location on the server and picking up your file that you were just using, you know, earlier on in the day, and now you're going to work, use it again.
And then having to go out to Moodle and pull in what you've put on Moodle or Google Apps.
Exactly. A lot of what people do now is they'll work on something, say, again, I'm going to use Word as an example here, but it can be any application. Okay, I've worked on a document in Word, I want to work out it at home. Well, let's see. I can email it to myself.
Right, right.
Okay, now I got to remember to go and get it from my email, or I dumped it up on Google Apps and as a storage location, or SkyDrive, or any of these things. Now I'm going to bring it home. Okay, now I got it on my home machine. Oh, wait, I have an earlier version of Word and I forgot to save it down to that earlier version. Okay, now I'm kind of, you know, lost. This would eliminate all of the file transfer and the various applications.
Kind of leveling the playoff.
Leveling the playing field, exactly. You know, and that's not to say that we can do this with every application. I mean, don't get me wrong. There are still going to be certain things that we end up, you know, sorry, DataCAD, for example, is probably one of those things that, you know, it kind of has to run on a dedicated machine. You know, we might be able to dish it up in this type of environment, but it would probably be very limited. Video editing, for example, if you're taking a lot of raw footage and stuff like that. Again, that's something, you know, it's not going to solve all of our problems. We can't dish everything through this applica, but we, through this interface. But for those that we can, it essentially extends it. And that's where I've heard a lot, most of the feedback from teachers so far. The enthusiasm when I've demonstrated this has been either, okay, yes, we can have access to these applications and the files from home, or, you know, bring your own technology. That's a very intriguing thought. I would say absolutely those are the two things that most of the teachers have come back and said, yeah, I like those ideas.
Thank you. Kent?
Got a number of statement type questions ago with, you know, 17 years ago, I sat on the other side where Tom did with, and I think, I think you'll go back as far as, was Ed Stokel here?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's how far, and Ed Stokel, huh? Yeah, and Ed Stokel was one of the first in the state that we began technology. We, when I was on the board, there were only 13 computers in the whole school system. Portsmouth was on the top four years later, and then we dropped to the middle because technology is this type of ongoing evolution. It's a non-stop evolution. And now I sit on this side, and I think some of the same questions because, at that time, I was with FedEx, knew a lot of different technologies, and we were bombarded because it's a big cost. And I kind of see this as level three, maybe, of technologies within the school program. And I think, older, maybe, not as wise, there's something going to go down here. I have high concern, and I think we're not alone in this, when it comes to some of the policy safety and contractual obligations we have with faculty. We see this on the news and so forth. I don't know that a teacher could ever be compelled to interact over the computer with a student. I think that's a wall that we have to discuss, and I think it's both moral, emotional, and maybe contractual. And I think that's one that I'd like to see. I'm not sure how we get there. So, again, that's one of the questions. I'm just sort of laying it out there. And if you, you know, when you were, I'll go down it and then you can back question on it. One classroom at a time-type situation, or one grade, or one school, I couldn't support that. We've done that a number of times in the school system, and I know we had a hell of a battle. Our school's greatest need at the time was New Franklin, but it had the most computers. And yet, people did not realize it at that time. And so, if we're going to lay out a program, and I'm not sure, and I apologize, I'm not sure if I heard that quite right, and how we would ever launch this. And I guess, as this moves along, I'd like, what's the launching plan for the district? So, that's something, I'm not quite sure whether I missed it or whatever, and I apologize. Safeguards and worries. I understood what Tom Martin was saying, you know, staying in between the rails. Have you ever seen a senior, or a junior, or a freshman, or a sophomore in high school? You know, if there's a way around it or something, they'll find it before Bill Gates, you know? And so, again, these are questions as we move along, I got to feel a safety net or some type of question coming back. I got a number of them right here in a row. Books versus software, hardware versus cloud, software versus cloud. I don't know where I am mentally and emotionally on that. I love to see a book. I haven't bought the Kindle-type version type of life yet. I haven't, and I do think hardware is going away to a large degree. And I think we're seeing something like, like I said, when Ed first came, everybody had a computer, everybody had a drive, it was all in a classroom. Now with this cloud, you know, great. I can remember, we took February vacations and we ran wires through every, you ran wires through every building in here. I predict that we don't need those wires in a very short period of time, if not sooner. I mean, I think a lot of that's coming to a different platform. And then, it does come down to the question, I think that Tom Martin brought up, is, you know, how do we start to look at this in funding? And, you know, I love the state of New Hampshire, grew up in this, but I'm embarrassed when I think, and my feeling is fairly correct, Maine beats our pants a little bit when it comes to technology. And I see, you know, our state official shaking a head. And I see this also, you know, that, again, we're a live free or die, we're independent, we're a local control. But your job didn't exist 10 years ago.
Yeah, it did.
Did, was it 10, how many years is it? I mean, about...
I've been there 15.
Okay, so just, you came right on.
I'm a survivor.
Survivor. So, I think the state, as much as we do independent ruling, it hurts us in the educational field.
It does.
Because in Maine, it's one platform, all schools use it. Is that a correct statement?
For the most part, yes. I mean, they do a statewide bid. That's what I was referring to, is that we're looking at what if, I mean, there's no, there's no plan, we're definitely not spending any state money because there is none. But the question is, if all schools have similar needs, if they all need to make sure that they have enough devices, even in the building, to conduct 21st century learning appropriately, not in the industrial model, but in the 21st century way, if we all have those similar needs across the state in all of our schools, and some are a little bit farther along than others, in two or three years' time, all their new equipment is not going to be so new unless they have a renewal program that every year, they're purchasing new equipment and the whole thing. So, there's always going to be, as you said, those needs. The question really is, can we achieve economies of scale? It is happening in some of the other aspects of technology. For example, we have statewide licensing, either arranged through the DOE or arranged through the NISTI organization, the Society for Technology and Education, the group that cosponsors the McCullough Technology Conference every fall. There are a ton of licenses that have already been arranged so that if we get so many schools purchasing so many licenses, we get the cost breaks. And so, those kinds of programs have grown and basically helped bring down some of the software licensing. In addition, some of the big companies are understanding that it's really important to help kids put those, that software in the hands of kids. So, you've got Google Apps that offers, Google Apps in Education, a true education program where we set up a separate domain. It is a somewhat protected environment, but they have access to the Google form of Word, the Google form of PowerPoint, and so on. And that's... And that's improving, just like every other technology. I'm just in the middle of discussing with ESRI, a statewide license for our schools, at no cost to schools. We have an Adobe licensing, statewide licensing program, which is, brings the lowest-cost licenses to schools that need various Adobe software. But ESRI is a geographic information system software, it's used across the world, widely in the GIS world, and so, we're gonna be able to offer, on a three-year basis, to all the New Hampshire schools, licenses at no cost, for really good industry-level software. And that's in process. There are other things, like I mentioned, the E-Rate, we did the stay Y-E, statewide E-Rate process, so that we could help schools that wanted to participate collectively in a common provider scenario, where hopefully, we would bring down the cost, but also increase the level of connectivity. You know, with the, moving to the cloud, you've gotta have better bandwidth. I was just talking with Tom before the meeting, and, you know, just to have ClassLink go into the high school, you still have to be thinking about what you're doing now in other realms. You're using probably NWEA, or something like it, for regular formative assessment in various grades, you're probably using other programs. When we get to online assessment, state assessment, the question, every, I hear commonly, whatever computers are in the building, when it comes time to do any kind of assessment, and those computers are taken over, they're not used for instruction. So, the question is, how can we level all that playing field? So, yeah, you've got a lot of issues there, but there are lots of economies of scale that we can be achieving. And I think that's, we're starting to get better at that. That's what the Sakai and the Moodle consortiums were about, was so that multiple districts, even though the software's free, the implementing that, and getting it hosted on a server that was common to all the schools, then you've just moved that off of, you know, Tom's plate. He doesn't have to make sure that the server's running, somebody else is. Somebody else is hosting, because that's what they do best, they host it, and so, he's freed up to do other work, to keep other things going in the district. I could just keep talking, I'm sorry.
Steve, did you have something?
Anything.
Anne?
I just had one quick question. The online assessment that you speak of, that may be down the road in terms of a national assessment, how does the DOE, if a school does not have a one-on-one initiative, how do they ever plan on implementing that? Whether we all have kids bring their own device down the road, or at the high school level, or whatever? How do we, how do we balance those two? I don't, I don't know how that works. If we, if the school doesn't have enough computers to have the kids taking an online assessment?
Right.
Then how does that happen?
It, it wouldn't be all students taking it at once, first of all, but also...
Right, but it could be a long process. If you only have a lab, or two labs that have 30 computers apiece?
No.
It could be a big rotation.
That's right. That's right. So, when I put my hat on, I go, hello, we have to be talking about some kind of, either bring your own device, or one-to-one, or something. Something that gets us close to that, even if, if we can't get all the way. I don't work in the assessment office, but I know that they're having those kind of conversations now, too, and they are working on piloting online assessment. We have done online assessment in writing in New Hampshire. We've done a pilot with, I think about a dozen school districts that have been part of that. And they have piloted it, and seen, you know, what's the rhythm, what, how many computers do they have to have available, at what times, and how does it disrupt other ways of using those devices? So, I think that's all in process.
Sometimes that's by grade level, you know?
Yeah.
You're doing the fourth and eighth grade, or whatever.
Oh, you were? Oh, good.
So, if, I'm just thinking in terms of time, and I know you have an hour drive home. So, are there any last questions? Stephen?
I was just gonna say, I mean, we're one of the schools that piloted the writing piece, and certainly, one of the things we've learned, and not just about that, but in our internet usage in general, is, is we're gonna have to find a way to manage the instructional use, you know, so that we can make the most of what we have, and I know Tom has looked into a few things, but as you've reminded us, Dr. Higgins, and looking at some of the purposes that we're trying to achieve with technology is critical. There's a lot that we're talking about right now. And what we've done is, Tom and I have put together a technology advisory group, which is a broader representation of teachers, administrators, parents, and we hope to have students as well involved in this work. And we've met once this spring, we'll be looking at some dates this summer to meet. And typically, what a group like this does is redraft the technology plan, and that's certainly something in front of us, but what we hope to do is take advantage of really bringing together some, some clear, teacher-driven direction and clear planning for what we would hope to be able to do instructionally. And I think that's the opportunity we have. Tom and I also meet with, that we call the, kind of the Technology Core Group, which is really the technicians, and the integrators, and those who are most closely connected to the supportive instruction. And what we hope to do out of this summer is to come out of that with a, you know, a plan that does more than speak nicely, a plan that actually directs the actions that we would hope to take over the next three years, at least. And that's, that's certainly something that we, you know, appreciate the Technology Committee here with Tom, and looking at some of the different things that are possible, because when Tom Lots did the demo for the advisory group a couple weeks ago, it really opened up people's thinking around, okay, so how do we, you know, how would we take advantage of something like this? What would this allow us to do? Sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And really, having this kind of conversation that sort of broadens it, is helpful. And we gave a survey to all staff in leading up to that conversation, that was to identify something that they were proud of, or something that they saw positive this year in their use of technology, and something they would hope to do with it in, say, next year. And already, that's led to some real concrete successes that we've seen, as well as some things that we know we need to support, wireless capacity, bandwidth, et cetera. So, you know, there's a lot of great pieces to what we're trying to do. Certainly, as we go through this work and come back to you in the fall, we'll be looking at a draft of a plan that would put some of this together, so.
And there are a lot of districts using Google Apps. They've sort of gotten some of the bugs out, and I actually think the middle school, if not a couple of your other schools, are pretty good users of Google Apps, yeah.
So, I would just say, you know, in terms of time, just to quickly sum up, I think, moving forward, I think keeping Leslie's question in mind, I think, is really helpful. How is this gonna be different than what we already do? So, if we can, and I can think of some reasons and answers to that, but I think, if we can answer that question for everybody, mostly parents, so that it's clear, that this, if we go this way, this is why, and this is how it's different, and this is where it's better, and these are the thoughts about it, positive and negative, I think that's really the best way to move forward, so. And Kathy, I'd like to really thank you for coming to talk with us, meet with us.
Thank you for having me. I hope I didn't talk your ears off.
No, not at all. We haven't had a good technology conference for a while, I mean, conversation for a while.
Excellent, excellent.
So, thank you very much.
So, maybe I didn't tell you too many things new, but I'd be happy to follow up with that with Steve and Tom, we'll talk.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a safe drive home.
Thank you.
Okay, getting back on track. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Yes, Superintendent's report, in your packet you have the latest Board Administrator, a couple of articles that Tom Martin had asked that I share with you regarding the thin client computing, as well as the ClassLink pilot that took place out in the Buffalo City School District, and also included next year's school schedule. You may remember, over the course of the year, you've heard the middle schools desire to lengthen the school day, you've heard a lot about Nancy Roy and Lister Academy's desire to lengthen the school day. You'll also note that we're talking about modest increases at the elementary schools as well, and part of that comes as a result of our process with the New Hampshire DOE through the focused monitoring process, where we're noticing a gap in terms of special needs children versus our regular ed students, and so, it's been a year-long process, and one of the things we want to implement systemically is an intervention enrichment block at each of the three schools. And as you know, there's not enough time in the day to do everything we would like to do. We have looked at area schools, the actual school day, normatively across the country, is a six-and-a-half-hour day. We've been lagging even, we've looked at some area school districts as well, their elementary school schedules. We're modestly increasing it there as well. The high school currently is seven hours. We still wanna work on, and have some conversations about how we get to an enrichment intervention block there, and provide that time, but I think we're pleased about how we're moving forward with that. Ms. Emerson, did you have a question?
I do. One was the, I was just surprised at the discrepancy at the elementary level, that over the course of a year, that adds up, that's quite a number of hours difference of instructional time, so I'm very happy to see that corrected.
Yeah, and in fact, I meant to, I know the board got, we sent one out, an email, or what was in your packet was actually inaccurate, and I did provide hard copy, I sent out a subsequent copy. We thought about it this way, five minutes, extending the day five minutes is really a two-and-a-half hours of increased instructional time. So, that 15-minute increase really nets us somewhere around seven or eight days of instruction. And of course, when one wants to think about a 30-minute intervention block, well, what's going to go away? Well, so we're trying to, you know, put this key strategy into place.
No, I think, I think it's great that they'll all be, I mean, because there's a 25-minute difference, or a 20-minute difference a day, and that's, you know, that's a lot. And then my other comment was, I know at one point, there used to be a discussion of starting the high school later, that holds better for their development, their sleep patterns, all of that, and I'm just wondering if the discussion, if there was a discussion about moving the high school, you know, just back a half hour, eight, eight to three, instead of 7:30 to 2:30. I didn't know if that was part of the discussion at one point, flip-flopping with one of the elementary schools had been mentioned.
Candidly, we didn't have that conversation. We haven't had, I know there was a study done some time ago, and Anne talked about it, I know she went over and met actually with Superintendent Coulter out at Oyster River, who did a pretty extensive study this year, and I think they had some community forums at Oyster River regarding that.
Maybe that's just something we could follow up on, you know, I mean, it's, if it's better for the students, it should be looked at.
I think, Anne, if I remember correctly, what you were saying earlier was that, and I hear what you're saying with the high school, but the middle school was the one that was initially more interested, is that what you're saying?
Actually, the middle school was interested in doing a pilot, doing a flip-flop with one of the elementary schools, to see how it would go.
Yeah, but you're talking specifically to high school, that's where all the research really talks about.
That's, yeah, which is why I...
I agree.
Which is hard to do.
Chose that, right, I understand that, but it's something that, you know, I think is worthy of a future discussion. But no, I'm glad to see that they'll all be the same, thanks.
Okay.
And the only other piece I would mention, you have three pieces of correspondence. One, of course, you've heard of Sandra Chick this evening, she was to receive a gift, she's announced her resignation as a Title I instructor at Dondaro, a nice letter of congratulations to the baseball team from the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association, and then a parent letter that I said I would share with you as well. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bartlett and the financial report.
Thank you. In your packets, you had month-end May financial report. This is the time of year where the things get tighter, and the variances are closer, and we do an extra amount of research all the time to try to get things to come out on an even keel at the end. Everything is still tracking the same way it has been for the last couple of months, and as I go through and predict the endpoints for a number of these categories and sections, each day, I get closer and closer. So, what we traditionally do is, you know, in the month of June, I give you an update at each of our meetings, like I'm doing now, just verbally, and then hopefully, in our July meeting, we'll be able to say pretty much where we're gonna end up. Right now, I'm still trying to manage the budget in terms of working on some extra special ed expenses due to changes in population that we discussed at the beginning of the year. Right now, I'm still on target to take care of that, and still come out on the positive side. I'll have more information for you on a specific, more specific level in the forthcoming two or three meetings.
So, just a quick question. The energy, I'm just, is our biggest number on there, and I'm guessing there's just, we're waiting for some invoices to hit?
Yes, we, what, the number you see there is halfway through May, so we've got, we've got, you know, the balance of May and June. So, the hardest part of this is, we have to, we have to make sure that we credit all of the days through June to 10/11.
Right.
And we have to predict those, because we won't get those bills until July, unfortunately. So, we're, you know, we're trying to do some estimating now, and, you know, so, I mean, that's in process this week, so hopefully by, you know, at the next meeting, I'll have a little tighter, you know, estimate, and then certainly, certainly into July, well, I'll be able to let you know, but that is the biggest piece right now, that's somewhat undefined.
Right, but just looking at last year's numbers, where we were, if we calculate the same way, you know?
Right. If you look at, if, I did a quick comparison of where we are at the end of May this year versus where we were at the end of May last year, and we are about 2% better overall. That being said, you know, we did have some extra special ed expenses this year that we thought we might have had last year didn't materialize, they did materialize this year, so, you know, we're trying to pinpoint and categorize those as well. So, there's still a lot of movement to take place to make everything balance out.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so, old business. We have a couple of policies we're due for a second reading, which means that this will be the approval of the policy on the second reading, if it passes. So, let's take them one at a time. Start with the facilities.
Yes, and I brought extra copies of the policy, I know, there's no change from first reading to second reading, but I did bring some extra copies in case members would wanna review that again.
Are there any questions? For Leslie?
Did you have Kent, yes?
I've wrestled, and I do greatly appreciate, as I stated at the last board meeting, in regards to the facilities utilization policy. And again, it is light years ahead of the original discussion that began back when the snowbanks were probably about six or seven feet high, and now we have no snow. But I, in my heart of hearts, and I have to go with, and this is a personal decision, I still feel this could run us, or boards down the road, into issues of it. And I appreciate, I understand the legal side, I think the legal side was not clear itself in the beginning, when we started to talk about this, and I think they have had great strides in being further down. I think the largest one is that, and again, of the use of the athletic fields for things that might, again, and I'll just use the word, because there's a dozen different words that have... that have been used out there, but might have some controversial type of discussion of what they may be used for. Again, I think we will have somebody in the heads. I think the votes are there tonight for it. And again, I will live with it. I will work with the boards with it. But again, it's taken us into a different realm of the openness of what we wanted to use the schools for at one portion. Especially, like I said, when we built both the high school and passed the middle school is that, you know, the overencouragement again. Again, those that have done the work on it, I appreciate it. But as of this time, again, the use of the facilities, I'm just not quite there. And I think it's okay for it to pass, but I cannot support it myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clay?
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for a motion at this time?
Sure.
I will make a motion that the Portsmouth School Board accepts the facilities policy for first reading.
Second, second reading.
Rebecca?
I just, I just have a clarifying question. On the second page, each of the schools listed will make up to three classrooms available. Is that, they're not set? It's just whatever three happen to be available?
It's going to the principals. Yeah, it's based on what's available and up to the principal.
Okay, thanks.
Tom?
And just, Kent, would you mind just elaborating on the piece that you were concerned about in the facilities? Is there a specific about the outdoor grounds, you know, which would pertain to the fields versus the indoor facility use? Is it more to the outdoor facility, buildings and grounds use of the policy?
I want to make sure I understand. I think there are a couple little parts, and I'm not sure that's what you're asking, that I have some difficulty with. Again, I don't quite believe in the three-room classrooms. I think I could live with it. But I think one of the larger parts, as we are now saying, and rentals have always, believe me, I've seen gun shows that were here, and there just are a number of things. And I think I brought up that both the Drum and Bugle Corps from the Salvation Army have used the fields and so forth. Under this, those types of, those types of, not facility, those types of programs would not be able to be, able to utilize the fields and so forth. You would exclude them. And I did confirm that at the last meeting with Kathleen Dwyer, that, yeah, it looks like it's mostly sporting events and/or our own band and so forth. So though, the, I think that, if I understand what you're asking, Tom, I apologize, I'm not quite sure I heard everything, is that it's number of classrooms and the fields. And I also think the number of times an organization might wish to utilize it. Other than that, there's a lot of things I think it has better, it has some better structure than it does. Again, I think now, the biggest challenge that comes with this afterwards, that I hope that administration will work on diligently right away, is procedure. Procedure has always been, I know of four different groups that have had the ownership of having to rent. And, you know, we, that was when we even had two more schools on at that time. So again, rentals are important to the community. They are important to also the private businesses out there to a degree. We've had that, we've had, I've known of five universities that have used our schools. And I think that could become controversial down the road. If a university with a religious background wanted to use our schools, they would be ineligible. And I think that would cause us some trouble. Thank you.
Yes?
Sorry, I just have one more question.
Sure.
Under Section Eight Additional Requirements, the use of alcoholic beverages and smoking, I'm wondering if there was discussion on firearms being included in that?
They're not allowed, anyway.
Well, neither is alcohol.
Where are you?
So I'm just wondering why are we stating?
Where are you?
Section Eight Additional Requirements, I'm sorry, Section Seven. The...
So, I'm sorry, so what are you asking?
I'm just, under Additional Requirements, Section A, the use of alcoholic beverages and smoking is forbidden. I'm just wondering why firearms aren't included in that?
Would firearms be, I would tend to think firearms would be more of municipal ordinance issue than it would be a
Almost a policy.
I mean, we can have a policy, but I would think municipal ordinance would trump, you know, school policy and
Well, because we already have a school policy that there's no, there are no, there are no drugs and there's no alcohol. We already have that as a policy. So it's like, we
I suspect it's in a different policy, and it's just an oversight. If you want to add it, I think that's fine.
And, and should drugs be included? I mean, because we have that policy, and here we are, we're stating it again. So I think it either needs to not be in there, or it needs to align with what our policy of illegal substances is on campus.
This is referring to legal substances?
Illegal in our policy, our, you know, things that we've denied. We don't want alcohol and smoking, as it says here. We also don't allow drugs or, I'm just, I'm just curious why it's not the same. And I think it should be the same.
Well, the drug, the alcohol and smoking for adults is legal, but we don't, but we can't have it in the building. I think that's the difference. And guns are not allowed in the school, anyway. That's a given.
All right, it just
Rebecca? So noted. I have a couple of quick questions, if nobody else has any. So just, I'm just wondering, maybe it's an oversight, maybe it's meant to be. So in Section Four, you know, where it talks about the small group meeting spaces, and at the bottom it says, "School facilities are available, blah, 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 for event or regular use." So as defined as an event or regular use, according to the definitions, people can use the small rooms, right? The section where it talks about the larger rooms, that same kind of paragraph, that's exactly, almost exactly the same? I'm just wondering, because it says, "For an event subject to room," it doesn't say "for an event or regular." And I'm just wondering if that was a purposefully meant to leave that out? So you're following what I'm saying? One says, "An event or regular use for the small rooms," and the large rooms just says, "For event," and not "regular use." And there are two specific definitions for an event and a specific definition for a regular use. So I'm just wondering if it was just an oversight? Or if there's a reason that's not there?
Based on the definitions, I think the drafters thought that you would use a large space for an event, but you would use classrooms for regular use. I think that's all that was intended.
What if it's a large, regular event?
And they couldn't do that all the time, anyway? The big rooms.
Well, they're both limited to eight times a year. But I see the distinction. But the question is, so what if it's a large, regular group that wants to do it?
Or a small event?
Yeah. So small events are covered. So, all right, well, it's fine. I'm just asking the question. I don't need to have it changed. I'm just wondering.
I think it was exactly what the superintendent
Okay. And so just thinking, thinking through for a second. So if citizens of the community took the fullest advantage of this, it's very possible that there would be three classrooms in every building, the auditorium, cafeteria, little gym, library, and little theater could possibly all be used at the same time on a particular night, as long as there's custodians available to manage all that.
And parking.
And parking, right. So I just think it would be a nice thing as this policy unfolds, you know, if we could get a sort of a semi-regular update from the administration as to like, who's using the rooms? How often is it happening? So, because we'll get a sense of how much people are using the space.
Well, I can tell you recently, my experience at the high school, the night we had the Booster Club meeting.
Yeah.
Portsmouth Listens was also there.
Yeah.
The Sustainability Group was also there. Dondaro Idol was also there. And there was one other thing going on.
That's a lot.
And there was no parking. And everybody was lost.
Right.
And it was bedlam.
Okay.
But it was great to have everybody in the school. It was just a little bit crazy.
Okay. So let's take a roll call vote on this.
Rebecca Remison?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
No.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. And then moving on to the extracurricular, co-curricular activities.
Yes, I did include a revised version in your packet. At our last meeting, at first reading, there was some concern and question around why alcohol was 50% of games. First offense with drug use was, or possession was 75% of games. Went back and kind of had a conversation with the principals about that, and Russ Wilson, and basically have changed that. So first offense for both drugs and alcohol, its use or possession, is a 50% loss of all contests. So that's why I included that and hopefully put it in red in your packet so you can note the difference there.
Great. So a motion to accept this as second reading?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Remison?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. So an update on food nutrition director's search.
Assistant Superintendent Zadovik?
Sure. We are hopefully nearing the end of our search for the next school nutrition director to replace Pat Laska, who's retiring. We formed a committee a little over a month ago now to go through a screening process for the applicants for this position. On that committee, we had a parent representative, teachers, a student, our business administrator, Mr. Bartlett, some cafeteria managers, as well as some cafeteria workers. And so we had a good representative committee, screened a number of applicants, and decided to bring seven in to interview. And from that pool have chosen three finalists. And right now, Mr. McDonough, Mr. Bartlett, and myself are in the process of doing some site visits for those three finalists. And hopefully for our next board meeting, we'll have a nomination to bring to you.
Great.
Great. Any questions? Good?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Done a great job, Mr. Zadovik.
Look out, Jamie Oliver, right?
So the next item is, there's been a request to reschedule our next board meeting, largely because we're scheduled for the 28th of June. But both Mr. McDonough and Mr. Zadovik are going to be away at a
We're at the New Hampshire Superintendent's, I don't know, retreat, as it were, and Bob Marzano is coming in to talk about, you know, he's a keynote speaker, you know, I'm sure you've heard of Bob Marzano. If you haven't, you know, classroom practice that works, you know, the eight key strategies to be employed in classrooms, et cetera. So he's speaking in that Tuesday afternoon, and we're hopeful to see him. The other reason to advance this, there are some things where time is of the essence. We're next Wednesday expecting bids on our bus transportation award. We want to get that food service director in front of you as quickly as possible because there are notice requirements that are required at the, you know, the other district or wherever the candidate may be coming from. So, and there are a number of other items to kind of act on. So we're looking for the right date. And the chairman, in his wisdom, suggested next Thursday night. No, I'm kidding. I suggested next Thursday.
I was going to say, I was
So anybody right off the bat, having issues with that? Sounds good. Okay. 23rd of June?
From Thursday.
Okay. And some new business?
Yes, under new business, we have three requests for one-year leaves of absence. You can see that two of them would be for the entire school year. The third, Jill Fast at Little Harbor School, is seeking to be out from September through November of next school year. Basically, Danielle Herman has been a middle school teacher, science department at the middle school. She had come to us as a administrative team, seeking a job share situation with another employee. There's been a, I think, a belief, once I arrived administratively, to restrict job share opportunities. One of the funny things about the proposal was, you go find somebody outside employment in the district and seek a job share. Nobody internally was seeking to do that. It's not provided for in the teacher contract. So she actually went out and found a job share with another in another district. She's asking for a leave of absence, however, to see, you know, because I think it fits her family circumstances for the year and would like to come back. Lauren Sargent is for child-rearing purposes, as typically has been done. And as I said, Jill Fast for two months at the beginning of the school year. So I would recommend you approve those leaves.
Move to approve.
Second, yes, Kent?
First of all, there's a number of things under this area of personnel. First of all, we used to have this whole area under personnel that fell right after the superintendent's report. And I really would like to see us have it back there so it's earlier on. Second of all, we used to always have pre-meetings so discussion wouldn't have to come up. And I'm, I'm not looking at individuals, it's always the positions that we have here. And I grabbed the superintendent, had a son graduating, had kids home I hadn't seen in a number of months. So I didn't open my packet until last night and started to review it. In Item A1, we have been down this road once before, and as I grabbed the superintendent before, we have ended ourselves up in both litigation with the, with the Teachers Association and ourselves in regards to it, where it was a semi-job share. An individual from a high school had left and went down to either South Carolina, North Carolina. And when he came back, guess what? He had a better offer there, and it left us in limbo. I, and again, I'd be more than willing to table this one. And I also have an issue with one of the others coming up in the Section B of this item that I wish to discuss. I'd be more than glad to table these, especially if we're only going to next Thursday. My issue truly is, is that there's a precedent set with Item A1 under here that has led us, and there has been legal guidance on this in the past, and I'm a little surprised. And again, I wish we had had a pre-meeting on personnel prior so that we're not in this awkward position. If you wish to move it, I will make further discussion because this person being employed outside during this does not meet the contractual guidance of our contract with the teachers' agreement.
So is that a table to motion?
I would table, I would table
Motion to table?
Item A1.
Well, we can table them all until the 23rd.
I can, if you wish to table all of this section, I'd be more than glad so that we can
Okay, so then, so the one you object, we can table the ones that you object, we could have a, on the 23rd
They would have to be pulled out separately by the maker of the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So who made the original motion?
I did.
Okay, so would you agree to take out, which ones are we talking about that you'd like to talk on the
Well, the motion on the table, I believe, and if I heard you correctly, is just right now for the leaves of absences, which is A1, A1, two and three.
Yes.
So
I only wish to see A1 held at this time, because the others are family leave, I believe. If they're family leave, they don't fall into that.
Okay. So agrees to remove the motion, I mean, the name from the motion?
So the motion is for two and three.
Yes. And the second agrees? Who made the second? Yes? Okay. We'll do that. Thanks. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And let's say, want to take these both to the 23rd, or was the, was the actual question about one in particular?
One in particular, which would be B1.
So under consideration and approval of employment?
Yes.
Correct.
So nominate just B2 this evening, which is Ashley Lorraine. She comes to us with one-year experience with a bachelor's degree from Keene. She'd be a third-grade teacher, full year, permanent teacher at Dondaro next school year.
Motion? Is there a motion made to do that?
Move to approve.
It's your second? Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll take up those two on the 23rd and non-public before our next meeting.
Right.
Okay. And the last item?
Yes, it's basically what we dealt with last time on Rogers Street. It's consideration and approval to transfer a middle school parcel that's no longer needed for school purposes to the city in accordance with RSA 1994, Section Two. And as you see in that memorandum that was written by the attorney, you're likely to have another one coming in short order as well. So then I think the city basically makes a disposition of that. Clearly, it's on the other side of the fence. Clearly, it's on the other side of the fence and the fence is, is the boundary line as far as we're concerned, so it is not necessary for school purposes.
So, we're pretty much moving down the line. Yes. Second? Anyone second?
Second.
Okay. Yes, Kent?
Only discussion is I have talked and I know I actually notified the superintendent as the first parcel came along that, you know, there was discussion, I think actually I may have said something to Mitch that, you know, they're going to all come a long line here, is that as this progresses, as a good neighbor, I would hope that when the true new border is there, is that maybe, and I know Chuck well enough, that we can work to build something that's an attractive fencing there because we know what's there right now. Doesn't even look, you know, presentable in any way.
It's going to be replaced as part of the process.
So, everything's going to come down and we're going to move it for them, or jointly?
The fence is going to be replaced. The boundary discussion will take place at the city level.
Okay.
But it'll be a nice fence.
Yes, it will be a lovely fence.
Nice boundary discussion.
It'll be lovely.
Okay. So, we have motion and second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. So, committee reports. JBC?
Since Dexter's not here, I'll play Dexter. We had the groundbreaking at the middle school, which was lovely. John Stokel did a wonderful job and everybody, it was a beautiful day, the sun was out, the kids got their picture in the paper, digging with the gold shovels and the hard hats and it was really nice. John did a really nice job and honored people and I thought, and most everybody was here, I thought, who was there, who's here tonight, I thought it was just wonderful and very exciting. It was nice to see the community behind everybody and I just thought it was great when the kids were walking down the road, the eighth grade band with their red t-shirts on and playing the music and the kids from the classes were behind them. I, I thought it was a great day. So, that was really nice. Granite Street, we took a field trip out to Granite Street, the new softball field and it looks to be ready, not really the first of July, more like the middle of July. So, we saw where they were going to build, everything's laid down for the new building and you could tell where our home plate was going to be and the fence is all up, you know, the big tall fence and we realized there wasn't a flag pole, so we requested a flag pole and a flag and all of that. So, that was good. It was good to go there and actually see it because then you can sort of see these things.
One of those, oh yeah, we forgot.
Yeah, exactly. One of those, well, there used to be one. It's not here anymore. So, that was great. In the meeting, we're almost, I think almost there with the value management log, right? We're just about there. We got a little bit more to do on that, but we're still working on that and almost there. The parking lot, you guys, I don't know if anybody's been by there, but the parking lot's all torn up and the fence actually comes all the way over now onto the grass. So, all the trees and the fence along the side by the parking lot are all gone and they found a second parking lot underneath. The parking lot was next to the, the school, which was kind of funny. But I think the plan is now to, as soon as the classes are over and school's out and the teachers are gone, to put in a temporary parking lot behind the library and rip that new one up because that's going to be hopefully all done by the beginning of school next year, the new parking lot. So, so that's in process and there, the, there's also a really cool machine there doing the rammed aggregate piers if you want to watch something kind of interesting where they're putting gravel on the top and it goes down this pipe and they're just kind of putting it into the ground, which is just kind of weird to watch, but very cool. And they'll be done with that in another week and a half or almost, oh, a week, I think they'll be done, or a week and a half. So, it's moving along, it's really exciting and it's fun to watch.
It's very exciting.
Am I missing anything?
I'd just like to comment that I thought the behavior of the middle school kids that day was absolutely phenomenal. We all had comfortable chairs to sit in.
Yeah, and they stood.
They marched down and they stood the entire time. There was not one wiggler.
Yeah.
They were wonderful. They really were terrific.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Great. Okay. So, before a motion to adjourn, I do have just two quick things. So, at our next meeting on the 23rd, we will have a non-public, so we need to talk about the superintendent evaluation. So, I'd like to make sure everybody gets theirs in if they haven't already. And I think one of the things we'll put on the next agenda is to set a date for a summer, summer retreat so we can have a conversation.
Where is the next meeting?
Where is?
Maybe a Little Harbor conference room.
Okay. So, motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.